Excuse me. This is the special meeting of the Community Redevelopment and Housing Commission. Today is April 11th, 2018. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, can I ask the Commissioners to make sure their microphones are turned on? Madam Recording Secretary, please take roll call.
Commissioner Kano?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Ramos? Commissioner Santana?
Present.
Commissioner Solano?
Here.
Vice Chair Tardif?
Here.
Chair Wood?
Present.
Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Vasquez?
Present.
We have quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Seeing we have quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. This is the time for the Commission to consider matters under consent calendar, items including number one through five. Do any members of the Commission have any corrections to the minutes, items they wish to pull for separate discussion, or abstain on? Thank you. Before we move to a motion, I believe we have a presentation from the City Homeless Services Manager, Hafsekka. Thank you.
Chairman Wood, I believe that's item number... Is it five?
Yes, five.
Is that under consent? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was under consent. I thought it was under business.
That's okay.
We're good? Okay. Hi. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to be very short. I ideally would have liked to create some form of a quarterly report like we had last time, but you know, there has been a lot that has been happening in homeless services, and I just wanted to make sure you were abreast of the situation. So, I don't know if you have heard, but we recently conducted a point-in-time count for the city of Santa Ana. This happened about, not last weekend, but the weekend before. And this was in light of the things that was happening with Judge Carter and the Board of Supervisors, and action of regional involvement in assessing and evaluating homeless services and the population throughout different cities. Santa Ana has been a pioneer, and has been very involved in addressing the homeless issue. And so, what we did, with the support of our City Manager's Office, with our Housing Division Office, with our City Attorney's Office, with our Code Enforcement, we collaborated within less than 24 hours to plan, implement, and execute a point-in-time count in the Easter weekend, Saturday. And we were able to have about 150 volunteers throughout the entire city to come support the effort. What we found was that there was almost a double amount of individuals who are experiencing homelessness. So, the stats are actually, I'm going to read them, but they're actually also on our homeless services website. So, last year, in 2017, there was 466 people that were unsheltered homeless. This year, we found that there was about 100, actually 1,030. And when you add numbers of the sheltered population, which is 587, we have 1,617 people who are totally experiencing homelessness in the city of Santa Ana. So, this data is crucial to help us continue to create programs and services to address and work on a regional-coordinated effort. I just really wanted to make sure that you knew about this. Another thing I wanted to ensure that you knew about was the homeless draft plan, and I encourage you to go ahead and go onto our homeless services website. And we have a link in there called "Ending Homelessness," an actual email. Feel free to add comments about it, but it's a six-point plan, and it includes immediate, short-term, and long-term. And it has to do with addressing homeless, addressing housing needs. We work very closely with the Housing Division. Outreach and support services, strategic planning and policy development, active coordination and collaboration with different cities and the county as a whole, and with Faithbase and other stakeholders such as Association of Cities and United Way, and also communication and transparency and capacity building. So, just wanted to make sure that you all knew that homeless services is working diligently, and we definitely appreciate the support of Housing Division as well. Any questions?
Absolutely. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Seeing there are no comments or questions on the minutes, I'd like to... Do we have a motion to consider items one through five?
I so move.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries seven to zero with Commissioners Frazier and Ramos noted as absent. The next order of business is consideration of the regular business items. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place for the public hearing of the Community Redevelopment and Housing Commission of the city of Santa Ana for the fiscal year 2018 through 2019, Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnerships Program, and Emergency Solutions... Pardon me, Emergency Solutions Grants Program. At this time, we would like to hear from the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a request-to-speak form and provide it to the Recording Secretary. Step forward to the podium. You may voluntarily state your name and address, and please be kind enough to limit your comments to three minutes. Madam Recording Secretary, are there any written communications?
No.
Thank you very much. Seeing there are no speakers, we will proceed. Will staff report on this matter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff, do have a presentation on this item. I'd like to invite our senior community development analyst, Ms. Terry Eggers, up to the podium to present our item. Hopefully, we can close that update on the...
Excuse me, Judson. Could we get the TV turned on here? Does that work?
Yeah, okay.
Because I can't really see if that will...
Is that possible to turn on that TV? Do you know how? Let's see. Let's see if I can... Hold on one second.
There it is.
There it is. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tonight is our public hearing for our annual action plan. Every five years, the city develops a consolidated plan to assess our affordable housing and community development needs and to make data-driven decisions. Each year, we are asked to update that plan with proposed action steps and priorities for the upcoming year. So, I was going to just walk through a little bit what we are doing here. So, again, that's our implementation tool for a one-year plan. The HUD grants cover three of our programs: the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnerships Grant, and the Emergency Solutions Grant. While we have not received actual award numbers for next year, we have estimated numbers with last year's funding. However, we have heard that there actually may be increases in this coming year, so we are going to keep our fingers crossed. For Community Development Block Grant, we're able to do public facility improvements, code enforcement, public services, housing rehabilitation, down payment assistance, and then we can also use it for our admin program oversight and fair housing counseling. Our home program works with our CHODOS, our nonprofit community housing development partners. We also are able to do multifamily acquisition and rehab, single-family mobile home rehab, and again, our administration of the program. Our Emergency Solutions Grant Program is the program that works with our homeless individuals, and the programs that we have in that is homeless prevention, street outreach and engagement, shelter. We can also use it for data information and rapid rehousing, and again, for admin and program oversight. The timeline and process for our action plan is that it was posted in the newspapers, in three of the newspapers, on March 26th. We have a 30-day public review period with a public hearing, which is this evening. The deadline that we have to submit this to HUD is May 15th, so we are going to be going to City Council on May 1st, which is why we asked for a special meeting with the times that we had your normal commission. It wasn't going to fall in line as easily. The results of the action plan will be presented as part of the CAPR at the end of the fiscal year. We will be coming back to you in approximately September with all of the actions and the performances that were in this current fiscal year for 1718. The action plan that we're approving this evening is for fiscal year 1819. I believe that you all have a copy of the action plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening.
Terry, thank you very much for the report. Before we move on to questions and comments from the Commission, I would like to return to the public hearing script and notate that the public hearing is now closed. At this time, does the Commission have any questions of staff or comments on the report? And I'll open it up to anybody that wants to ask. I've got a few that I've notated here, so allow me to start. I'm not sure, Terry, if you want to come back up, or if I can just ask Judson. On the... You touched on the outreach to the public. There were three newspapers that you published the notice in?
I'm sorry, can you...
You had mentioned that there were three newspapers that the notice was published in?
Yes.
Just what were they? I know you said that last meeting.
It was the Orange County Register, Minnie Ondis, and the Vietnamese one, Viet... Viet something.
Okay, no, that makes... It makes sense to cover all those bases.
Yes.
This is probably only my second round of this process. Is it common not to have any public speakers at these? I mean, is the outreach generating what we need, or is that just...
This is actually quite common.
Okay.
Although, you know, we do post it in the newspapers, and we actually put it on our webpage as well. We place the document in the library on our floor and on the eighth floor. We tend to not get as many people that come to make...
Unless you drag them off the street, probably.
We try very hard.
Just a comment on note I made on page 623, where the projects are listed, their names are listed. It might have been easier to have the dollar amount just on a column going down there as well, just so that people could just zero in on the ones that, you know, were of high value, or... But just a comment I made, that's, you have room there to put the value next to it, because then you have to go through each of these subsequent pages to see what the value of each of these funding proposals are.
The way that we are now required to submit the document to HUD is through an online program that they have, and so...
This is the way it falls?
It's just, yeah, it's their document. If you have recommendations, we could go ahead and create something ourself and do it differently, but this is straight off of the HUD website.
Again, I could follow it. It was just a kind of a note, something like commented on or a thought. Moving on to 627, for Project Five, ESG for the homeless activities is $475,000. Do you have, do you know how that compares to last year?
Well, we used, right now, when we were creating the document, the same exact numbers for all three of our programs that we currently have. However, we have been informed that we will be getting an increase next year. We don't have the actual amount, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Judson, I think it's a 10% increase. We're expecting a CDBG, a 5% in ESG, and what was it for home?
Unfortunately, I don't have the information in front of me. We did report it to the Commission at the last meeting during staff member comments.
No, you did, right. So, are all these numbers placeholders, or are...
They are. We utilized our current figures.
Waiting to...
And then we'll have to redo the entire document once we receive the correct allocation.
Right, but they compare to each other pretty closely to what I'm seeing here. If something's like one-tenth of the amount of something else, that's probably the way it's going to stay. For instance, on project number seven for fair housing, $64,000, you know, compared to code enforcement, which is $815,000. It just doesn't seem to pass the test of, you know, why you would have so low amount, or why we would have such a low amount on fair housing versus so much on code enforcement. Is there a logic that...
So, under fair housing, the $64,000 that's allocated versus the code enforcement amount...
Right. It's just, again, an observation and a question as to the reasoning behind such a low amount for supporting fair housing, which is a goal compared to code enforcement, which is a need.
So, in terms of the supporting fair housing, this is an annual allocation that we make to the Fair Housing Council of Orange County?
Through the CDBG.
And actually, the Commission approved that allocation at your last meeting in the scenario one? If you remember, at the bottom, there was a...
Yeah.
Fair Housing Council of Orange County, and then, I believe it was the Legal Aid, was it, Daisy?
Fair Housing Council of Orange County and Fair Housing Foundation, they both applied for funding, and you recommended to fund Fair Housing Council of Orange County. They've only requested $66,000.
Right.
And their funding comes out of our 20% administrative cap, so that is much lower. And then, the code enforcement dollar amount, that is not part of any funding cap, so that's part of the general program account, and that goes to pay staff members here at the city.
Oh, I see. So, that's... Got it. So, that's staff.
Correct. It's staff as well as, in the code enforcement department, as well as some of the legal expenses that are tied to code enforcement.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense. Is that the same relative to the project number five for the homeless activities? Is that a lot of administration as well as other programs? The $475,000, meaning compare that to code enforcement at $815,000 versus homeless services at 475?
So, the differentiation there is the two different sources that are being used? So, the one is ESG and the other is CDBG? And the ESG amount, that's our annual renewal?
That's just pretty much all there is.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
And on 631, my last... Close to my last questions. This, on the park improvements in low-income areas of the city, as well as residential street improvements, are those identified, or are those just placeholders? Are those parks and streets identified, or are these placeholders for this program money?
So, I met with Parks and Recreation staff, and their top priority in terms of funding is Santa Anita Park, redoing a soccer field there. I believe they're putting artificial turf. And the reason that's their top priority is they received other funding for that, and this is the final piece to fill that gap. And they have a tight window on when they need to complete that project, so that's why they bumped it up to number one. They are anticipating to add additional priority projects when we get our final dollar amount. And then for streets, they have not confirmed which streets they will be funding, but they will be in low-income areas in the city.
And my last question is always comparing from this year to last on the annual plan. The percentage targeted for low and moderate income areas, 39% of the funds versus citywide at 61. Is that the general, is that typical of prior years?
Correct. Same.
Okay, thanks, both you and Terry for the answers, and Judson. Commissioners, are there any other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Garcia?
I just had a quick question. In terms of publicity, when it comes to letting people know or residents know about the action plan, I know year after year, we do the notice in the newspapers, and then we place a copy, a physical copy, in the lobby, and then on our website. But have we ever sent out a notice electronically to our NICSOL? What is it, the NICSOL database subscribers?
You know, we have, we haven't actually sent out a NICSOL. That is, that's not a, that's a good idea. And Terry, have we done it in the past?
We have not done it for the annual action plan, however, for the five-year comprehends the consolidated plan, which we will be undertaking in another year or so. We do outreaches to the community. We have a lot of community organizations that we meet with. We have community meetings, and we receive a lot more input into that five-year plan.
Yeah, I think, I think that's something staff can consider for next year.
Just for, I mean, because I think the simple document is, if you're looking for feedback from the residents, that would be a good touch point, because I just don't know how many people really read realistically the Register, and I don't know about the other publications. I don't know yet, highly popular in the Vietnamese newspaper, but the Register sometimes. I've got a lot of people that don't read that.
Yeah.
They read the Alley Times. So, that's, I'd rather get news directly from the city, and I rely a lot on the NICSOL service, because I just, it's straight news versus an article which is sometimes, the information is presented differently. So, I'm just throwing that out there.
Absolutely.
And then I just wanted to add, for the projects that are funded through Parks and Recreation and Public Works, they do a lot of local community outreach to identify community needs, and then those are the projects that they apply for funding for. So, they're doing their own outreach directly involving their projects. So, the project that they bring forward, they have a lot of community outreach present there, and then when they go forward, like right now, there's a couple of projects in design, they have several neighborhood meetings where they're doing outreach specific to that project.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kano.
Okay, I'm not sure if this is a county-related question, but for when we write the block grants, they kind of measure like success for the programs and everything. For the annual goals and objectives, do we have a way to measure how successful we're being with homeless? Like, how many people are getting out of homelessness with all the support that they're getting?
Right. So, the annual action plan will set the goals, and then at the end of the year, when we put together our CAPR, that are compare the goals that we put forward in the action plan versus the actual accomplishments. So, you'll see that at the end of the fiscal year.
So, that will be like measuring how many people were actually able...
Correct.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Well, that's a good question, comment. So, then you'll be measuring against the starting number that I believe we heard earlier from Ms. Kekka, 1,617?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing there are none, do we have a motion at this time to approve the item from the public hearing, number six? Pardon me, item six from the public hearing, fiscal year 2018 through 2019, Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnerships Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program.
Chairman Wood, I'd like to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2018 to 2019 Annual Action Plan, and recommend that the City Council authorize the submission of the fiscal year 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tardif. Do we have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Santana. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries seven to zero with Commissioners Frazier and Ramos noted as absent. At this time, we move to comments. Does the public have any comments they wish to share with the Commission? Please know that you have three minutes to speak. I don't believe we have any public speakers. Does the staff have any comments they wish to share with the Commission?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, a couple staff member comments, starting with our regular housing authority story of success for April. The story is forthcoming. We haven't published it yet. It's been quite a busy couple of weeks with, in regards to homelessness, and I hope to be able to, we haven't drafted, but I hope to be able to publish that story by the end of this week or early next week. An update on our City Council action items following our previous CRHC meeting. The City Council, acting as our housing authority, approved our annual plan unanimously at our last meeting. There were no questions on the item when it was taken up for consideration. An update on our depot at Santiago project. I know you also received an update in our Housing Division Quarterly Report, but we are happy to report that construction has been completed, and residents have started to move into the project, including 10 residents who will be moving into the MHSA assisted units, which are, eight of those 10 units are project-based voucher assisted units, so those tenants have already moved in. The grant opening is going to take place in May, and the invitation to the Commission is forthcoming, so please keep a lookout for that invitation in your inbox. Next Friday, the Thrive Conference is happening. I think it's Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities. Are they the sponsors? They're putting on the Thrive Conference, and staff has been asked to give a presentation that afternoon, providing an overview of our housing opportunity ordinance, including our sharing the program details, the success of the program, and the outcomes that we've achieved through our local housing opportunity ordinance that's unique to Santa Ana relative to our other cities, partner cities in Orange County. If you haven't received the invitation, an invitation at the Thrive Conference, please let us know. Email us. We'll send you, send that out to you so you can attend. Should be a very educational, informative conference for our local community. In regards, and in follow-up to the rent stabilization work-study session that staff held on February 6th, we are going to be hosting two housing solutions workshops with Mayor Potem Martinez on April 23rd for property owners and apartment association members, and April 24th for tenants and residents. We are going to be inviting our two tenant commissioners to participate in the tenant-resident meeting, including Commissioner Vasquez and Commissioner Frazier. The meeting is being exclusive, excluded to only 10 individuals each for each group, and that invitation is forthcoming, Commissioner Vasquez, so please keep a lookout. We, last night, we, our staff provided our quarterly down payment assistance payments workshop. We sent out a NICSOL a couple of weeks back, following the update by our Commission and by City Council to our down payment assistance program, in which our Commission and City Council approved to double the amount of assistance available to low-income families and also permit moderate-income families to now apply for the down payment assistance program. Unfortunately, we only had nine attendees attend the workshop last night. We are going to revise that NICSOL for next quarter in July so that we can, we will hopefully have a higher turnout. However, on June 23rd, the city of Santa Ana, in collaboration with the Delhi Center and Neighborworks of Orange County, will be hosting a free homebuyer fair from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Delhi Center. Key information on various down payment assistance programs, credit, and preparing for homeownership will be provided at that event. Registration for the homebuyer basic class is required. If you have any questions at all regarding this event, you can email info@nwoc.org or call 714-480-89333. And to register for the class, we will, can provide you with, for the workshops, we can provide you with the website address. A NICSOL on that event will be forthcoming probably in late May or early June, so that we can promote that event as widely as possible to promote homeownership opportunities for our families. It's good timing, especially in light of our update to our down payment assistance program of making the program more accessible for our residents. We, today, we hosted two tours of the Orchard Project following the grand opening that we held in February. In the morning, we hosted a tour for the Region Four and Region Five HUD Field Office Directors from across the West Coast. It included the Field Office Directors from Seattle, Portland, Oregon, San Francisco, Hawaii, Phoenix, Los, and Los Angeles, as well as the Director of Voucher Programs who joined us from HUD headquarters for the tour. It was a really neat tour. We had 12 directors there total, and they were very, very pleased with the project and excited to share the results of our work here in Santa Ana with other, with other public housing authorities and jurisdictions throughout the West Coast. In the afternoon, we gave a special tour for our City Council. It was a unique opportunity for us to walk the project, describe the project in significant detail with our council members, and we were excited, and we rushed back from that tour to ensure we were here on time for the meeting. Two other, two other comments. I want to remind all of our Commissioners about the Lead the Way training. If you have... If you have not completed your training, the deadline to complete the training, I believe, is April thirtieth. Is that, is that what we established?
Yes, sir.
If you need an extension, please email Chairman Wood if, if you would like to request an extension on that training. But we, we are asking that everybody complete that training, and, and that way we can ensure we comply with HUD's direction, and that we receive full points under our Section Eight Management Assessment Program every year going forward. And lastly, at our City Council meeting on April, this past, this past City Council meeting, our City Council appointed our new Executive Director of Community Development, Mr. Stephen Mendoza. Mr. Stephen Mendoza joins us from the City of Los Alamitos. We don't have his start date yet, we do anticipate it to be in the next, the next couple of weeks. And with that said, one of our, 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 our executive director has, has, in the past, staffed this meeting, and so this may be my last time sitting in this chair, but, but of course, I'll be providing staff, staff updates on our items going forward. But it has been a privilege to, to staff these meetings, and, and we are excited to introduce the commissioners to our new executive director in the next couple of weeks. With that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other updates.
Thank you very much, Judson. Commission members, please note that no member may speak more than once until all have had an opportunity to speak. Also, the commission may vote to limit our comments to three minutes each if we feel the need. I'd like to start with Commissioner Kano, and if any commissioner, I come to you and you're not ready, we can come back to you, but Commissioner Kano, if you'd like to go first?
Just thank you, Judson, for everything you've done for the commission. We definitely want to hear from you in the future, too, and just get your feedback, too, for anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Can you come back to me?
Absolutely. I'd like to thank the staff for the reports this evening, and for fielding all of our questions, and also thank Hafsa Keke once again for the presentation, and hopefully we'll see you maybe at least every other month with an update, if you can. And also, to, to say to Judson that it's going to be, you know, we're certainly going to miss you, assuming you're not sharing these or, you know, sitting in with these meetings anymore for the city. So, thank you very much for all your support in the past, and hopefully we'll still talk by email.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Orson, one more?
Well, first, I would like to just set a reminder that April twenty-first is the Noble Five K event at Saddleback High School. Of course, it's a Five K, if you don't want to run, it's okay, because we will be running a street fair, which I am in charge of, so please come out and support. And second, I would like to say thank you to Judson for everything. I mean, you were the first person, you and Ms., I'm sorry.
Terry.
Terry, I was going to say Letty. I was like, Letty, see, I'm like, no, it's not. You two were the first people I met, and thank you for writing the recommendation letter for the law firm, and I would just like to say thank you.
Vice Chair Tardif?
I'd like to thank Judson for everything he's done for the commission. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I'm sure we'll continue working in the future. I do have a question. Do you have a date on the grand opening for the Santiago Depot?
They, they haven't, haven't set a date yet. As soon as we get it, we will, we will send it out as early as possible, so they haven't set a date yet, though.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because we're going to be out of town two weeks in May.
Ah, okay, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Which, which two weeks?
Yeah.
I think I commissioned...
I'll send you an email.
Okay, please do, I'll let them know.
Thank you. Commissioner Santana?
Of course, thank you, Judson, for your service. It's always easy to communicate with you, but I do want to address if we can make a line item for our recording secretary, to see if we can adjust the time for our meetings. I know sometimes our commissioners have a difficult time getting here on time, and I want it to be extended to, you know, past six o'clock, just to make it more convenient for members to attend. I understand that, you know, traffic and dealing with work. Second item would be, can we use these upcoming city sanctioned events to really promote housing? Understand that May and, and is a couple, May and, is it August? We have two big street fairs coming up, and so they're great opportunities for us to reach out and, and speak, and, you know, I don't mind volunteering, tabling, and giving information, but I think it's always good to like talk to folks one-to-one. And the third item was, I really would like to, you know, get more of a report with the homeless. I understand that it's something new that's been added, but also would like to see, you know, introduction and actually, you know, go out in the field and be invited to those, those homeless counts, as well as seeing what's happening, because, you know, it's something that is a hot-button issue, but I also want to get more information with that. Thank you for the city staff for your reports and all the information you've forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move on, a question for Mr. Hodges then. Is that something we could add to our agenda for next month as far as discussing the time that these meetings are held, or what's the avenue for that?
Yeah, that's something for staff to, to review and consider and put on the agenda, if that's something that they want to put on the agenda for the meeting. What it would require is an amendment to the bylaws, because I believe we...
Right.
Or that might have been our commission, but, but it's lit, the time of the meeting, the day and time for regularly scheduled meeting is listed in the bylaws, so if we are to change that, it would be an amendment to the bylaws. We'd be glad to add it to the agenda upon the direction of the commission. The, one thing to keep in mind on, on extending the meeting beyond working hours is your costs for staff time, so, you know, while, while you as taxpayers and as commissioners overseeing our, with oversight over our programs, you're, you're paying for overtime for, these four of our staff who are here right now, beyond five-thirty, beyond the regular working hours, and, and so it is, it is an additional cost to our programs, and, but we would, again, we would be glad to agendize it with, with the direction from the commission.
Certainly worth discussing.
Okay.
I mean, it's been brought up, so let's, let's add it to the agenda, and with, with your comments, certainly put into the, to the notes. Commissioner Vasquez?
Well, I too would like to thank Mr. Judson. It's been a pleasure, and I've learned a lot from you from the, from the very start, and you've all been very helpful to me and respectful. I thank you. Wish you...
I'll, I'll still be here. Of course. I'll still be here. Just both be sitting here.
Good.
And Commissioner Garcia?
Okay, just wanted to say thank you to our Homeless Services Manager for your presentation. I really, we all really appreciate it. Thank you for being an advocate and being out on the field and doing the work and being a spokesperson, advocate for our services and our homeless population as well. You're doing a great job. Secondly, I wanted to thank Judson for all your, your, your commitment to our commission. You've always had a solution for us, answered our questions, and have gone above and beyond to answer our questions and do what you can to assist this commission to do our best work, so thank you very much, and I wish you the best. I know you'll be around, but we got used to you, Cincinnati, I'm sure the new ED is going to do a great job as well, but thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you. One of the things I forgot to mention real quick was on the Quarterly Report for Housing Division Projects and Activities, it's really great to see this, I know it only comes once a quarter, but the updates on all the projects that are in the pipeline is just really encouraging to see, I mean, to see the progress and where all these are, having it visualized in front of us is, is awesome, so thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the commissioners? In seeing there are none, this meeting is adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for May twenty-third at four-thirty PM at the Council Chamber.